Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson.
Yes, here.
Garnat, Gray, and Mr. President.
Please rise for the pledge and the invocation by Councilmember Richard Hall.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A number of years ago, I was driving through the sand dills of Nebraska, and I saw this weathered sign out on the pasture, and it says, "Good day, bad day, your choice." And I thought to myself, that's sort of a good philosophy. So when I start the day, I'm in charge of my day. So I've had a good day today, and I get this in a good time, and have a good evening. Thank you.
City Clerk certifies publication in the day record on October 4th, notes for review council and regular city council meeting October 8, 2013. A current copy of Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the East ball of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Resolutions, replays, platces, platces and subdivision agreements pursuant to City Council Rule 7H due to no meeting being held over 15th. Agenda items number five shall be laid over three weeks for two, October 29th, for publication of public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, agenda items number six through nine shall be laid over for three weeks to October 29th. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number 10 shall be laid over for two weeks for publication of public hearing. Liquor, item number 11, Keystone Center, 7803 Military Avenue, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 11 is today. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, members of the city council. My name's Adam Astley. I'm the attorney for Shane Feeley, who is the principal of ASF Investments LLC, which is the applicant. We're here for the public hearing, and unless the members of the council have any questions for Ms. Feeley, we would ask for a motion in support of the license.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today that want to speak? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Milton.
Yes. Hello, how are you? Could you please state your name?
Shane Feeley.
And Shane, actually, I was at Keystone Homeowners Association last night, and it was brought up that you were opening. And could you tell me, how many seats are you going to hold in your center?
The center, they had, previously, it had been permitted for 500 people. With the measurements today, they, we measured our math, it's seats 846, I believe.
Okay, well, I just think that that's wonderful. I think it's a great location, and I think it's something that's really needed in that area. And I just wanted to kind of call everybody's attention that we had that opening there in Keystone, and I think the neighborhood, at least, is very excited that you're going to be there.
That's great.
They may even have their chili feet there coming up in February, so. All right, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Great, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Jerem, Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Item number 12, Boogie's Bar and Grill West, 14334 U Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is James Sean, and I'm trying to open up the address that above here, and the Boogie's Bar and Grill.
Bogies, not boogies, right?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? See none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Most approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number 13, Twisted Post Bar and Grill, 14901 Industrial Road, Class C liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on item number 13 is today. Proponents?
Hi, my name's Rhonda Post.
I'm Dana Post.
We are the new owners of an existing business. We purchased an existing place and have changed the name.
Great, and your address, please?
14901 Industrial Road.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Most approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 14, Doubletree by Hilton Omaha Southwest, 3650 South 72nd Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 14 is today. Proponents?
Hello, my name's Michael Stockman. I'm the Director of Operations for 72nd Street Hospitality.
I'm Chelsea Milks. I'll be doing HR when the property opens.
Thank you. And your address, please?
3650 South 72nd Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
With the approval, second.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 15, The Quick Spot on Center, 1941 South 42nd Street, Suite 300, package liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 15 is today. Proponents?
Janice Brown, and I'm here on behalf of The Quick Spot on Center, 1941 South 42nd Street, Suite 300, asking for a liquor license.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
With the approval, second.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on consent agenda to be removed. Items removed, consent agenda shall be taken out by city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they remove unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items number 17, 17 through 28 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See none, public hearings closed.
Most approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 13, Twisted Post Bar and Grill, 14901 Industrial Road, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 13 is today. Proponents?
Hi, my name's Rhonda Post.
I'm Dana Post.
We are the new owners of an existing business. We purchased an existing place and have changed the name.
Great, and your address, please?
14901 Industrial Road.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Most approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 14, Doubletree by Hilton Omaha Southwest, 3650 South 72nd Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 14 is today. Proponents?
Hello, my name's Michael Stockman. I'm the Director of Operations for 72nd Street Hospitality.
I'm Chelsea Milks. I'll be doing HR when the property opens.
Thank you. And your address, please?
3650 South 72nd Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
With the approval, second.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 15, The Quick Spot on Center, 1941 South 42nd Street, Suite 300, package liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 15 is today. Proponents?
Janice Brown, and I'm here on behalf of The Quick Spot on Center, 1941 South 42nd Street, Suite 300, asking for a liquor license.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
With the approval, second.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number 16, Olive Garden Italian Restaurant at 16929 Lakeside Hills Plaza. Request permission to appoint Courtney Jensen manager.
Public hearing on item number 16 is today. Proponents, please?
Hi, I'm Courtney Jensen. I'm the General Manager of the Olive Garden on 168th and West Center Road.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
With the approval, second.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 15, The Quick Spot on Center, 1941 South 42nd Street, Suite 300, package liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 15 is today. Proponents?
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. I'm not sure if the owner and developer were able to make it, but these, this is a new group of developers into the midtown area who have a commitment to help revitalize and redevelop in the midtown area. They've chosen this particular property, which is on our, here's one of our representatives of the development team, but this particular property is on our housing and community development code and condemnation list. It's been vacant. In fact, there was a demolition order that was on it a couple of years ago. They've come in to look at this and have been talking with, of course, Jerry Reimer, another developer in that area, and would like to be partners in principle in terms of helping to redevelop that area. So they are going to be able to remove this particular property from being blighted and substandard and rehab it completely into 15 apartment, market rate apartments. This will take a severely underutilized property and make it productive, and it will also help to revitalize and restabilize the Park Avenue and the Leavenworth neighborhood. This represents 145,000 in a TIF loan and represents a little over 1.4 million in investments in this particular property in this particular midtown area. With that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
With the approval, second.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 15, The Quick Spot on Center, 1941 South 42nd Street, Suite 300, package liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 15 is today. Proponents?
Janice Brown, and I'm here on behalf of The Quick Spot on Center, 1941 South 42nd Street, Suite 300, asking for a liquor license.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
With the approval, second.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on consent agenda to be removed. Items removed, consent agenda shall be taken out by city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they remove unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items number 17, 17 through 28 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See none, public hearings closed.
Most approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 15, The Quick Spot on Center, 1941 South 42nd Street, Suite 300, package liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 15 is today. Proponents?
Yes, if you could come up.
Absolutely.
I figure people ought to be introduced to someone who's willing to go into such a transitioning neighborhood and willing to stake their dollars to try to improve it. I've been keeping an eye on you, and just so everyone has a context of what's going on before we get there, would you tell us who you are and?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, my name is Chris Henry Turner. I'm with SL Jensen Construction. I'm the Controller of SL Jensen Construction and Administrator of 1011, the 1011 LLC, South 30th Avenue LLC.
So you've gone in, basically, it's about a block west of Park Ave. and a block south of Center, I mean, Leavenworth?
Yeah, that's correct. Actually, it's right on the corner of Mason Ave., or Mason Street and 30th Avenue.
Just so everyone knows, that's probably a frequent, previously frequent flyer for our graffiti van, for the police, for the vice unit, for you name it.
If the council would be interested, I could show some pictures of who was living there before.
If you have them on your folder, you can take us down memory lane for a second, because this is a heck of a cleanup project here.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was being frequented by a lot of, a lot of different individuals, and I'll just kind of, there's kind of one of the rooms that we, we've had to clean out.
I don't know how, you've been there for a while working, I've seen, and I don't know how many dumpsters you've hauled out of there of debris, but.
I think it's been about 25 of demoing it down, right down to the studs and all that. The roof had about six layers of shingles on it, so when we tore off the shingles, the whole building just kind of, like, breathed a sigh of relief. It was kind of, kind of interesting, I guess. I wasn't there for it, but just with the weight of all the shingles and everything like that. So the building, my point in that is that the building, it was made very well to hold that kind of weight with six layers of shingles and then another layer of wood shingles. It has good bones, I guess, is what my point is. And interesting, interesting enough, we were watching, what was it, a documentary on the, on the history of Omaha and some of the buildings in Omaha, and the Heimball, which is this place, was a luxury apartment, living, or a luxury apartment back in the day, like, in the, turn it, like, around 1819, or 1918, and around that time. So we see a real good, a real good, a real good building here that we could, that we're, you know, renovating, and will provide some real good, some fine living for young professionals and revitalize, you know, an area now that's, you know, it's, there's a lot of traffic, well, there's a lot of suspect traffic going on in that, that area, I guess.
So, thank you for your partners willing to do that, and the conspicuous blight that the heavy volumes of traffic would see as they drove on, on Leavenworth or Park Avenue in that intersection, wouldn't necessarily see the less conspicuous, just remove the block where a lot of the serious problems that police had been trying to address over there many, many years, is this, this property and the block that it's on just to the north is kind of a weird L-shaped.
Yep.
With a very narrow mason on the south end of the Urban Village project. And so for, I mean, I'll tell you, you guys have guts going in there, and for a tax increment investment of only 145,000, this will further trigger additional reinvestment in that area. And I think it's, it's money well spent, so thank you.
Yeah, I think it's, it'll be a good investment for Omaha and for the area in general. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, before you leave, I just wanted to say that I wish some of the newer construction had the, the good old bones from, from the old days. Those old bones are better than some of the shaky bones that I see that's going up in current times.
Agreed, agreed.
Yes, and, and to my colleagues, I'd like to say that, you know, sometimes we argue and fight over TIF, but this is, this is the project that the original TIF laws were meant for. And so I'm, I'm all for urban infill in what you're doing, and when this one is done, I hope you bring us another one.
Well, that's what we're looking to do, and Larry couldn't make it this afternoon. He's the president of SL Jensen, and he, he has definitely a good vision for maintaining buildings such as these or renovate, you know, a good vision for wanting to keep the character and the history that resides in these buildings and kind of re-renovate that and kind of bring that back to its original charm.
Well, we hope, we hope you bring us some more.
We'll do what we can.
With that, I'll move the approval.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Gray.
Yeah, just very, very quickly, I did see that documentary. The guy, if I remember correctly, the guy that did the building that you're doing ended up doing a couple of buildings, I think it was in Paris, if I remember correctly.
I believe you're right.
Yeah.
I believe you're right, yeah.
But I saw that documentary. If people get a chance to see it, that was a great documentary.
It was really, it was really interesting.
About the history of Omaha and some of the buildings here. There's one on 24th and 25th, right on the corner of 25th and Lake. That was done by the first African-American architect, and that building is still there as well. And that one, if you're talking, the one you're in, I think it was, I think he ended up doing a couple of major projects in Paris.
Yeah, I believe, I believe you're absolutely correct.
Yeah.
So it was, it's really interesting, and you take a look at some of the, the construction that they did on it, just, you know, some of the details that they went to back then when they didn't have pneumatic hammers, they didn't have electricity, they didn't have power saws, it was all, you know, hand, you know, it was just a sharp saw, is, you know, really a sharp saw and a knife, and it's really interesting to see the kind of, you don't get that in today's, today's craftsmanship, so, anyway.
It was a great documentary. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I add my thanks to Councilmember Jerem, too. Thank you for taking the chance.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for your time and listening to me.
There's a motion in the second. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. We'll now do item 53, resolution that terms the deed of trust, construction, security agreement, and assignment of rents in promissory notes executed by 1115 Harney Street Limited Partners, securing a partial financing of the rehabilitation of the property, hereby is amended.
Public hearing on item number 53 is today. Are there any proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Is there a motion?
Both approved.
Second.
Roll call. Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
as well as the city as a whole. So with that, hopefully that answers your question.
Well, I just wanted to, to follow up on that, and this is infrastructure that really would be necessary for that whole Exarban area and for further development beyond the UNO arena. Isn't that right? Whether this arena was built or not, this actually is infrastructure that would be needed if something else went in there.
Well, that's, that's correct. I mean, I guess it would depend on what happens south of Center Street, you know, as far as future development, but, but this is really, and I think in early on in the discussions when we met with Public Works and the planning department and some of the council members, we identified 67th Street as being really one of the only opportunities between 72nd and 60th Street to make the connection north and south from Center Street to Grover. So to me, that is going to alleviate a lot of the problems on 72nd and a lot of the problems on 60th Street. And then with the other improvements that have been identified, that'll obviously allow for a better flow of the arena traffic and depending on what else is done by a separate agreement and some other improvements that might be done based upon the Exarban Village buildout, that is supposed to help the overall traffic flow of the entire area. So that's, that's the idea, that's the goal, but the 6.3 that we're talking about in this interlocal cooperation agreement is to reimburse the university and potentially AFT or some other third party for public infrastructure only. And there's a, and it's a cap, it's an absolute cap, maximum of 6.3 million.
And how much is the, how much is the cost of this total project? What's the private funding and the funding that UNO is putting into it?
I believe it's private funding, don't quote me on this exactly, but I believe it's about 38 to 39 million as far as the private donations for the university, and then it's about the same for the public funds that the university is raising to build this particular arena. So 39 and 39.
Got it. Thank you, thank you for that information.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Hey, Mr. Jovan, just another way to put it is that not only are we not building an arena with city money, but we're building roads that are necessary. So there, the traveling that's going to be done on those things that we're fixing, 80% of it is going to be non-UNO-related traffic.
Well, I guess it depends. I mean, a lot of it's going to be, obviously, based upon the arena use. I mean, the amount, when the events or the hockey arena is being used.
We're talking about maybe three times a week.
Yeah, there's only 22 to 24 games a year.
Right.
They're typically on Friday and Saturday nights.
And if you throw in, if you throw in graduations and a few other things, it's three times a week, maybe about three, four hours each one of those times. The point I'm trying to make is that there's a lot of local traffic that will use that infrastructure, and it's nothing, it's not different than anything else that we're doing right now when we're taking city money and putting it into infrastructure. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
And I just want to highlight, I guess, what can come from this public infrastructure investment by the improvement of Arbor Street, south of Senator, 64th Avenue, of 67th Street, and then connecting through Grover. It opens up redevelopment opportunities in the corridor west of 60th and south of Senator that before were just really not occurring. We had the Bucceys at 60th and Center, and some years ago, the, the Nearys with the Regal, what I call the Regal Awards Building, but there's so much more opportunity there to the south of Senator that, that this will now facilitate because the public infrastructure's there. So when you do these things, other things happen that then get additional economic development and jobs and things going, so.
Thank you. See no further lights. Next item.
Item number 37, ordinance approving a redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement between the city and Cypress Point 2 to implement the Cypress Point 2 tax and financing renovation project plan located southwest corner of 60th and Hartman Avenue, which proposes the construction of two three-story 40-unit buildings with affordable residential units for households.
Public hearing on item number 37 is today. Proponents?
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item number 38, ordinance to approve an amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the city and CO2 LLC to authorize payment to reimburse CO2 LLC for the stormwater work performed at the city's request and located directly south of the TIF project development at 10th and Worthington Streets.
Public hearing on item number 38 is today. Proponents?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, as it states, this is for some work that is related to the TIF project that had already been completed. They finished the stormwater system work, like, just this year, so we are reimbursing, the city is using their dollars to reimburse, and because it was a part or related to this TIF project, we are amending it to make it a part of the scope of the TIF. So that's all we're doing.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item number 39, ordinance to accept the bid from Municipal Emergency Services to provide firefighter leather boots for the Omaha Fire Department.
Public hearing on item number 39 is today. Are there any proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading and public hearing on agenda items number 40 through 44 shall be held on October 29th. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the second reading and public hearing on agenda items number 45 through 51 shall be held on October 22nd.
Most approved.
Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Garnett, Gray, Mr. President.